We'll call the Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, March 16th. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Item four is public appearances. Public's opportunity to speak on any subject not a specific agenda item. We actually do have someone. Mr. Chris Hampton, the town, town chair.
I've heard that it's been over six months since the State Government's given.
Committee has met. Dane County's declared a state of emergency. On the 19th, spring starts. We'll have flooding, possible tornadoes. When we last met, the committee had items to accomplish. I have no idea if any of those have been completed or worked on, but the committee needs to get ready for spring and whatever the weather will bring us. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right. Item five is discussing, consider the meeting minutes from a regular board meeting from March 2nd. Any comments on the minutes for a motion? Motion approves or a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Again, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Item unfinished business. Update on the housing task force. Matt?
Yes. Aaron, John and I met last week to brainstorm potential members of this task force, people in the community, business community, and we came up with a list of about 20 to 30 people that we'd like to reach out to. Aaron drafted a letter that we'll be sending out to people, but given the current situation, it's probably best not to rush to do that and starting something during this time till we know a little bit more. It may be hard to coordinate a large committee like that with, you know, video, audio conferencing and the like. So we're just taking a bit of a wait and see approach on that and we'll continue to formulate the scope and objectives for it so we can move forward, you know, with it quickly in the future, so.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt. New business then. Item 7A is discussed and considered proposal from a noticed Grove School District, from Monocle Grove Board regarding the new elementary school development. I don't know. Aaron, who wants to add? Larry, you gonna start with this one?
I'll start on that one. So actually, as you all know, because you received a copy of the document, the school board wrote a memo to you, our board, and what we're, we can definitely discuss that memo, but what we've done since that was received, Aaron put together a cover memo that was also provided to you, and what we've done is we've all sort of put the development team together and attempted to outline what options are available to you. And if you're wondering sort of the official sort of status of why we're in front of the board on this, there's, when we have projects that have been previously approved, which this, the scope of this project has already been approved long before my time here, last July, and when we get into a situation where we're finalizing a developer agreement and we think that we're about to head down a path that might differ from what was approved by the board, we use our judgment to decide when to come back to the board and seek some input. And this is one of those circumstances. So in particular, what's sort of at issue right now is in July, the board, after Plan Commission approval, the board approved a, the scope of the elementary school construction project, including a full buildout of Bus Road along the boundary of the school district's property at the expense of the school district and converting it into a split two-lane, a four-lane boulevard. And the school district has provided us with information that they're not in a position financially to do that in the short term. They've provided us, all of you, with an explanation as to why they think this has happened, and we might have some differences of opinion on that as to whether or not those facts are accurate, but at the end of the day, they've told us that they're in a financial situation where they can't proceed with what they, with what was approved by the board in July. And so for today, we'd like to have some discussion about a few options. Obviously, there's one option, which is just require them to do what was approved in July, regardless of their request for some relief here. A second option is to find a way to complete that work now and delay the school district paying for that work. In other words, the village floating the cost of that work for a period of time. That is an option. It's similar to what the village intends to do with the portion of Bus Road south of the district's property down to the intersection with Cottage Grove Road. And then the third option is the one that we've been working on since receiving this memo, and that is we asked our engineers and planning staff to determine what would be the minimum cost measures that could be done in the short term pending a full buildout a few years down the road. Minimum being, minimum still sufficient to protect the safety of the students and other users of the road and the facilities. And so we've come up with, I say we, but I give credit to MSA, really, and Aaron, they've come up with a plan that whereby we would allow a limited buildout now pending a full buildout in, we're proposing, 2025. That gives the school district time to plan and if they need to go to a referendum to do so and to generate additional revenue to cover that cost. And in particular, that plan would be, and you've seen the diagram that MSA created, it would have a right turn lane for northbound traffic for both the southern and the northern school site driveways. It would have a left turn lane for southbound traffic on Bus Road for the southern entranceway to the property. It would prohibit left turns from the north onto, into the northern driveway. We've added into that a requirement that there be some flashing markers at the crossing from Lane Street where that would cross Bus Road and then a full, the full bike trail, bike pad, multi-use trail from Cottage Grove Road up to Lane Street, which passes both of their driveways. And last, they would be required to have a roadway between the middle school that exists now and this site and a path or walking, walking, biking, probably a sidewalk from the school site to the dead end of Pheasant Run. So there would be a ability for people from the east to access the site without having to go down to Cottage Grove Road and up bus or up and down and from, approaching from the north. And the, overall, I think it's the opinion of everyone involved that this would be sufficient, even if there's some queuing and some lines for a period of time. This would significantly cut the initial cost for the district, but it would also create some additive costs because some of these costs then would be, some of these, some of the improvements that would be necessary to do this would be removed then in five years when the full buildout is done. And what we're looking for, you know, for smaller things that vary slightly from what we think was agreed or what was approved, we would just submit that as part of the developer agreement, but we thought this was a big enough thing that it was worth coming back to the board and seeking some input. There isn't anything in this plan that's not consistent with eventually what was required of the district. It's just really about timing and what we do in the interim.
Is what you laid out consistent with one of the options that they laid out, or is this a third kind of proposal?
They didn't lay down either, lay out either of these, any of these options.
Okay.
They really, they really hadn't fleshed out full options in their memo, I didn't think. And so, you know, we took their request for relief and said, okay, what can we live with in the interim?
Okay.
And this is really about make sure the kids and the folks going to that school are safe in the meantime before the full buildout is. Ultimately, the district has to build out that road the way the commission, Plan Commission as well as this board approved, but we're just essentially delaying that for a bit to give them relief. As they said in the memo over and over again, they haven't got enough budget for this, and all they had to do is go back to the Glacial Drumlin, you know, work there and figure out that they were woefully underestimating the number, but they didn't do that.
And the other thing you should know is that we forwarded, even though we didn't have your input yet, we forwarded this third option in general terms to the district last week, and that is an exception. I normally wouldn't do that because you get accused of kicking goalposts around, and I don't like to be in that situation. But given their timing and their need to get going on this project, we sent that to them last week and asked for their feedback. And I did get a call from their attorney. They, the district board hasn't met, so it's not like they're, they've approved this and now it's up, this is just something that with your, as long as there aren't strong objections, we would offer to the district. But I did get a response from their attorney, and he said, you know, initially on review, it was, it looked like we had done everything we could to, when we explained a few of the components, everything we had done to reduce the cost while still maintaining and protecting, especially student safety. They did have some concerns about requiring a crossing at Lane Street, and we share these concerns. If you create a crossing at Lane Street, it sort of indicates to people that that's where they should cross by bike or by foot traffic, and really, I don't think any of us want the, the roads, there's no sidewalks and there's narrow roads in the subdivision just to the east of, in the town, just to the east of the school site. And I think it's not preferable that kids, especially elementary age kids, ride their bikes on those roads to and from school or walk, but we think it's inevitable that some will, and that when they get to village property, they need to be made safe. And so I think we share the concern that we don't want to throw out a welcome mat for kids to be traveling outside of a vehicle. That whole neighborhood, as close as it is to the school, is designated as a busing route by the district because of the lack of sidewalks and narrow roads. And so that's something that they don't want us to incentivize that, but they also understand that if kids are going to be there anyway, we've got to do something about it. So they raised that issue, but for the most part, there was a good discussion and they understand, understood where we were coming from. You know, for instance, this plan doesn't require them to put any curb and gutter in or anything like that on this temporary, during this temporary phase, which saves a great deal of cost. And it is what it is. There's going to be money lost by doing this, but the hope is that it'll be a small enough portion of the total that it makes sense for them in terms of their overall budget.
But they need to go to referendum to get the additional money to pay for it in the future?
They need to figure out how they're going to pay for it. So they've got a capital budget, and they either have to shift or change, or it's not necessarily going to be a referendum, but it may very well be. That's for them to figure out.
And then what if the referendum fails?
They're responsible to pay these costs.
Yeah.
Then we would put it in and assess them, most likely.
There's always, you know.
Put it as what?
We can, we can do the work and assess the school district, and they understand that.
What would happen if the, we're not talking about like a new school amount of money for this road. You know, we're not talking about 60, you know, 70 million dollars. We're talking about $2 million. And what would happen if that were to take place is they would, they would just have to delay a lot of their other capital projects around the district to be able to pay for that. Certainly, school districts go through that on a regular basis. So we're looking for some feedback, just some discussion. There's nothing to approve. It's just, is this a direction we should be going to sort of break this logjam at this point?
Well, we want to say then, I'm appreciative of staff, MSA, Eric, you, Matt and Aaron for going through all this effort. This is what the school should have done with their alternative. They didn't. So then we're spending our efforts on the engineering side and looking at traffic and everything, really trying to ensure that these, the kids and folks going to that school are going to be safe with an alternative. But ultimately, the school district has to come up with improving this road as required back in July. So that's my only feedback.
Under this proposal, would the school pay upfront for this initial part? Would the village be paying anything upfront and then assessing the district, or would it all come from the district from the get-go?
I don't want to steal all the mic time.
I think for this work, we'd be, we'd be doing the work and then billing them.
So is there, would there, I don't know the general term of an assessment. How many years in general if we were to do it all and assess them as it's currently planned? Could we stretch out the number of years so that their payment is less if we have to come up with the money from the get-go anyways and be assessing them?
I mean, then for just this portion or doing everything?
The whole thing.
I mean, anything's possible, but then we're borrowing that money and we're carrying that interest and we're carrying the debt capacity and taking, taking on that burden, and they're a much larger organization than we are and have much more capabilities to handle that debt than we do.
Right.
And this is the same, virtually the same costs in public improvements from Glacial Drumlin and this school. Glacial Drumlin needed, you know, each school needs a north-south road with a lighted intersection and other connections. So virtually the same thing back in 2007, the estimated cost was a little over 2 million and approximately 2 million, and that's what it, what it is today, too.
So it is possible to do that, as Matt said. It's possible. It's just the village would have to figure out how to pay for that.
And that's not in a five-year plan currently?
Yeah, we'd want some analysis done by elders and we'd want to vet that a little bit, if that was the way to go.
And we're already taking on portion of light and some other pieces of this, of these improvements as the village, so, which we wouldn't have had to do for a while, so.
Is the yellow, that's just paint. It's not like an actual meeting.
Right.
Because we hear about all the speeding on these roads and how fast people go, and I mean, I, I'm concerned about kids' safety without sidewalks or curbs there.
Where you see those, there shouldn't be anyone on foot.
Well, yeah, there shouldn't be, but there's a school there.
But I guess what I'm saying is that what we've tried to do here is to create, wherever anyone could realistically be on foot, to create a safe foot travel path for them. That includes a bike pad path all the way from the Cottage Grove Road up to lane, crossing lane, and then also, so that only, the only place, I guess, there's three driveways there, and that's, there's a possibility that someone could cross there against, you know, illegally cross there, but that's also going to be the case when there's a boulevard there, too. You'd hate to see someone darting across from those driveways under any circumstance, but.
Where does the 35 miles an hour come from? Is that, should it be 35, or is that a requirement traffic-wise, or can we go down to 25?
I think ideally it would rather be down to 25, but it's at 45 mile a week, so you can clearly, you're calling it a route attendant, I don't know.
A study?
I can study everything, but I think 25 would be more ideal for the school district area there.
Well, can we drop it to 35 an hour? And then in a year, when the school opens, drop it to 25? What's the cutoff of time?
There is a period of time within which you can do that. We'd have to look.
I'd have to look at what it is. I don't know the years.
But that's just what was going through my head, too, is how long do we have to wait? When we don't, we can do a study, and that would also help with really what ideally you don't want, until this gets built out, you really don't want people using that as their bypass around the village, which I think a lot of people use it for now, because you want to slow them down, and, you know, hopefully there'll be enough slow queue there that it'll, for those few years, if this happens, it would be a non-ideal route to take to bypass the village.
I think the speed limit required to be 20 in this goes on? I make that up from David.
Are we talking 45?
On bus or BB?
Bus.
Bus. Yeah, I think we could easily change it to 25 at some point. No, state government's not going to come back and say, you shouldn't have done that, change it back. So I think we could easily accomplish that.
But do we need to take a step now, like Melissa suggested, bring it to 35?
Yeah, but there's no way the state is going to come back and say you made it too low, unless it's 15 or something like that, but that's when kids are present anyways.
Right. But just because you lower the speed limit, too, doesn't mean that that's, that people will abide by that either, and that's my concern with just paint rather than some sort of, like people go how fast they feel comfortable going with. And on that road, they're already going 45.
Yeah, the other thing with the speed limit is, do we want to go down to 25 and then back to 35 when it's a four-lane boulevard? And that's something to be evaluated, and we should probably evaluate that, maybe before the school opens. If 25 is the right speed, even when it's four-lane, then we might as well go down.
So on this picture, the red lines are the sidewalk or walk path, foot path?
I think the blue.
At the end of the road, okay.
There's a note that says there's a 10-foot wide, I think it's path, and it shapes out the east side right along the right, it's in blue.
So the blue is the foot path, like the Montezale?
And is the rapid flashing beacon, is that the one where they press the button for it to, so that they can cross, or?
Yes.
But it's not flashing all the time?
Correct.
I appreciate all of the work that you guys have done on this. I guess what I feel a little frustrated about is wanting it to all be done, you know, from the get-go instead of piecemealing it, and it's what it feels like, but.
Yeah, we thought we had a, and again, it was just with, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I mean, with discussions with their staff, we had a compromise where the school would complete the Bus Road improvements up to Lane Street, and then they'd finish the remainder at a later date triggered by development to the north.
And what stops that?
But once they got to their, the school board, the school board said, no way, but they were, the school was okay with the turn lanes and the signal, and they were, it sounded like they would be okay with the fourth edition roads heading north.
And I think regardless of what justification or reasoning was provided in that memo, fundamentally, and whether they were looking for who to blame or anything like that, their position is they don't have the money to do it, and it, if that's correct, it's actually going to cost more in the end to do this, but that might be the situation that they're in. So I think that, you know, we were talking about, Matt was mentioning the northeast Pheasant Run and the other two roads, the completion of that up into the West Lawn subdivision. They sort of grudgingly accepted having to do those, but that's because we've said they're not going to have to do that for a few years because there's not going to be a need for those roads for a few years, and that sort of underscores how their decision-making is being made right now. It's about delaying cost and really not pushing back anymore on the things that they can delay and just pushing back on the thing right now that they can't, or without a significant move by the village.
And those northeast fourth edition roads do not actually, they can develop them and they can put the roads in and develop that area, but they don't, theoretically, they could, they could sell that area, too, so it's not a, it's not necessarily a requirement that they physically put the roads in up there.
Are they talking, so would we still be required to have the crossing guards on at Lane Road? Or would we do a crossing guard there or Lane Street?
I don't know.
Yeah, the crossing guard question hasn't been answered, and our, the history that I'm new to on crossing guards in the district is speckled. I'm new to on crossing guards in the district is speckled with disagreement, I guess, as far as I understand it. So there isn't anything here that's going to require that, but given the fact that it is a difficult subject, that's why we pushed for the lights for at least a start there.
There should be crossing guards.
Then we have to pay for them. Keep our kids safe.
The name of the game.
In 2012, we went to them with a proposal to at least share in the cost of crossing guards, and that just didn't go anywhere. They referenced that, in their opinion, this, because it's streets and public safety, that it's a city-village type issue. And in doing research, it's, everyone handles it differently. Some share in the cost, some it's the city or village doing it, some it's the district doing it. So I'm not sure if there's...
That's exactly right, and...
I'm not sure if there's an actual, at least not clearly in statutes, because if it was clear, then there wouldn't be this hang-up.
Yeah, and I think that, I think it's fair to say that our understanding is that the district's position on crossing guards has not changed since 2012.
So ultimately, it'll be if we say no, and we're going to stick with the original plan, then what?
School's delayed. They lose a construction season or so, whatever.
It puts us in a great spot, doesn't it?
Because they don't have borrowing capacity for $2 million that, for capital project?
I mean, we don't really know the, you know, we weren't involved in building their budget or referendum dollars, and we're only hearing that they don't have enough money, but we don't know what that means. We've heard that they're potentially pulling, and again, this is, I didn't hear this directly, but that they're maybe pulling back on some of their renovation projects, and then they're referencing to people that that's, they're going to delay those, and it's because of the village adding these requirements in.
Yeah.
I think regardless, I don't know, can we do some sort of communication or something that just explains to the community? Because that is the message out there, that the village is being a bully and making them pay for streets, and why should they?
Because we want our kids to be safe.
Yeah, no, I agree with it. I just, I think that...
Seems to me that the school would want that as well.
Yeah.
You know, and your residents, your village residents, who are concerned enough to put some time into learning what is happening, I think they're going to come to the conclusion that there's two ways that they themselves can be part of paying for this road. They can either pay for it as a village resident, if the village just decided, "Hey, we're going to pay for this," or they can pay for it as a school district, someone who has property or lives in the school district. And if they do the latter, it's going to be spread among a larger group of people that cover the cost for a school that serves the larger group. And that's, that's just the way, the way, from a cost perspective, that's the way it works. It's a much larger footprint of people that are in the district than in the village of Cottage Grove.
And Erin always creates an action report that clearly lays out what's required and what's been approved at a meeting, and for just this very purpose, and that's made available to, I mean, it's a public document, it's included in the packet, and I would say 99% of the time, shared with the developer, if not 100% of the time, so, or with the applicant.
Remember, all future maintenance and snow removal and everything, this is a village road. So this is initial construction, and people on the other side of the road that live in the town, just like anyone else that's in this district, pay for part of this initial construction. And then it does fall on the village after that, despite this not being a taxable entity, to keep these roads clear and clean and repaired. And the village isn't doing nothing. The long-term responsibility lies here.
So I see it's on a, it's part of, could be part of a closed session, this part of it, is that in case, or why is it on both, on our agendas?
There's opportunity to go into a closed session if one of you wants, and we would wait so that people, but there's an opportunity, when we get to that point, to make, for someone to make a motion to go into closed session, to have more discussion about this from a negotiating perspective. We didn't anticipate that that would necessarily be something you'd want to do, but put it on the agenda in case you did. So you can tell us, keep moving, hold their feet to the fire, find a middle alternative solution, or we can have more discussion in closed session.
I mean, what's been presented here is the minimalists, to keep kids safe and everything, as well as in lieu of what their memo said, so this is the minimum the district's going to have to do to make that school happen, in my vantage point, ultimately having to do what they agreed upon last July. So Larry, a point, it might cost a little more, because they're going to tear some things up to get that road into that shape, but this gives them some relief. We kind of take the high road on this and allow them to get going on it, and then they have to figure out the rest of the money somewhere else at some point.
Which ultimately, we end up paying for, too, as taxpayers.
Yes, but we don't at least pay for it only as the village.
That's true.
And we still maintain, like I said, you know, looking at engineering and traffic and everything, this at least allows for the kids to be safe, people to get in and out there, and give some relief to the school that hasn't, doesn't have enough budget for this.
We've also, we've had enough conversations with them about these alternatives that they've committed, and we've committed, that engineers will work together to try to, if this happens, to try to design this in a way that you take advantage of as much of what you're going to do now that would, could then be used for the final. So it's, you know, roadbed widening, those sorts of things, trying to, we'll try to figure out how to do that in a way that isn't in a different place than what would require down the road, so that, to try to minimize the lost cost.
John, Heidi is watching live, and she messaged me a question, and it's one that Larry and I have discussed and prepared for, but I'll just read it out loud, and you can respond. She asked if we move forward with an option that isn't to the, you know, letter of the law or close to what was, and I'm paraphrasing what she asked, but to what was approved, does this set any precedent for future development?
No, because I think the agreement will still stipulate what has to ultimately be done. This is just the first phase that I, Larry, you can, you can wordsmith it how you need to, but I think that's what we're getting at, is, you know, we're allowing you to do this, you know, this is phase one of this, just to get the school built. We actually have done this before with GDS. We did not complete in front of the GDS school, the, you know, second lane of Cottage Grove Road. So the school district is still on the hook when we redo that, to put that in. So there is a precedent already to do this type of stuff. We allow some developers to delay things a little bit here or there when it's appropriate.
We set the precedent with them, with GDS, so that's, here we are, once again.
Well, and remember, precedent is in the eye of the person who makes the argument, right? Setting a precedent in this case doesn't create any kind of a legal obligation for us to waive any requirements or delay any requirements in the future. It just creates arguments for someone, and this is a very different thing, you know, I think as long as you're not being arbitrary about the way that you apply these things. From a legal perspective, you're safe. It's facing the arguments where you have to concern yourself.
And you've gotten, you've just been in touch with their staff and legal team, but not the board, on the proposal?
Right, they had a board meeting last Wednesday, and we really just got this put together, what, Thursday, and forwarded to them, and they called us that afternoon and gave us some initial responses. We just really wanted to make sure there wasn't something we were missing, and they didn't tell us anything we were missing.
It seems like some, in the past, we've gotten to a place we thought there was resolution with the staff and their legal team, but then, when it got to their board.
I think that, I can tell you this, it will be, I think, very clear to their board that if we move forward with this or something like it, that they've got two choices, and that is do what they had approved in July, or accept our efforts to try to ratchet that back temporarily. And I told their attorney, and he very clearly understood and respected this, this is not a negotiating point. This is not a starting point that we expect to pick apart and pull apart. This is recognizing their timeline, we went as far as we thought we could, and it's up to them to decide whether to move forward. If they don't like this, they can certainly do what was approved in July.
Okay. Does anybody remember if they were saying that GDS would open before, like, schools start at GDS before the elementary school? Because more people would then go through GDS to, and then go to the elementary school and drop off their kid, as opposed to going to the elementary school first, going on bus road, creating more traffic, they're dropping off their kid, and then going to GDS. So if GDS started first, they'd be more likely to drop their kid off there first, then take the driveway to the new elementary school, thus avoiding more traffic going onto bus road initially, right?
What do you mean, started first? If GDS started?
Like, start at 8:00 AM and then the elementary school start at 8:00?
Oh, I see. The time.
Or something.
I don't remember, I thought they said it was the opposite, where they'd come in to the elementary school, drop off, and then sneak through to the middle school, GDS, and drop off there, and then come back out.
Right.
But either way, they, they should hit a light.
Right.
But that's an easier route, because you can take a right into the new school and a right out of GDS, so you're avoiding crossing lanes with a bus, which to me is a lot more logical than taking, you know, left and left.
But then, so more people, yeah, either way.
Yeah.
Although, it would be better if the bus came out on bus road, because, just because then they'd avoid Damascus into the town, too.
Yeah, I don't know what route they're going to take. They probably don't know, maybe even yet.
I appreciate all the work that went into finding a way to accommodate a lesser amount of money for the school, but my concern is that it's, like, it's not as safe as it should be for kids to walk to school, or to ride their bikes to school. So that's my concern with it.
And did you have a, if, of dates that they would have to have the second portion?
Yes, we were talking about 2025.
Okay.
Starting for the school, the school year that began in 2025.
August 2025? And the school is slated to be open August 2021?
That's what we understand.
So there'd be four school years of this temporary construction thing? Yeah, I, my opinion is I support, if it's proposed in the way, oops, Larry, that you suggested, where it's this or the original plan, I don't know how else, I don't know. I feel like that's, I think we should offer them this proposal that you guys came up with.
Well, they're still going to end up having to do what they agreed on.
Right, in the end, right. Just if they're going to do it all now, or do this part now.
Right. That's the, that's the option.
Yeah.
Delay the portion of it, but ultimately, you're responsible for doing what you said you were going to do.
And I think no later than 2025 school year.
No. Yes, no later than 2025. I'd be a little bit more lenient on my thinking if this weren't the same group that we went through this with a, with a different school, you know what I mean? It's like, who's not doing their homework there? It really makes me mad.
You know, we certainly ask that question, and there isn't anyone on their board that, I think there's one person who was seated on the board right when this was, the Glacial Drummond was being finalized. They don't have the...
The history.
Just don't have the history or the experience with this, and unlike the village of Cottage Grove, that, you know, we've got half a dozen right now developments that deal with issues like this, and it's just a difference of, they're, as Kevin pointed out, their initial estimate for, for construction cost for this road was $225,000 or $250,000, and they didn't even take into account any of the alternative methods for traveling to the building other than by car or by bus. It was just really fully a traffic study, and they went to referendum now going on three or four years ago, so it's, it's, you know, there's just, if they ever do this again in a greenfield site, and this board is still in place, they'll know what to ask their engineers next time, and...
But Damascus was $2 million, so they should have figured that this one...
That was 1.9 something, right.
Kind of oversight on their part.
Whether they're on the board then or not, just look at the contract. That would have been a real easy thing to do, and I'm sure that their consultants did, and somebody probably told them what it was, but somebody took a, slashed off a zero on the number along the way. It's what it looks like to me.
And I'm not happy to find out that, you know, the village has been considered bullies or anything in this, when it was their mistake. It was obviously their mistake.
Yeah, there was, there was, I mean, if, we've dug into this pretty deeply, because we want to make sure that there's not something we should do differently, and I think the lesson is, they got some bad service from some consultants, and the consultants should have known. And from our perspective, you know, you don't expect to have to handhold or really carry that educational component with a big sophisticated entity, but I think if there's any lesson, it's try to do even more to make sure everybody's on the same page. And if we happen to learn of them going to referendum, and we connect the dots and realize that what they're doing is going to referendum for something that we haven't even designed yet, or even weighed in on what will be required, that maybe we wave our arms a little bit and try to be helpful so they don't end up in this spot, but...
The only other thing we could think of would have been to audio-record the meetings, but that, they're informal staff meetings, and that's not really a good way to start a process, is, hey, we need to record these. It's not a, it's not a level of trust that you want to start with on a project, but...
And I don't think anybody's alleged that something that was, said wasn't, it's just, they're just saying that they were unaware. But I don't know that anybody'd be saying that. If there was enough money in the budget and they had budgeted enough money to do this, we'd probably just be moving on, but that's not where, they tell us, we find ourselves. All right.
I guess I see it as a real safety concern myself. I don't like the idea of the design. It's like they're trying to put a Band-Aid on a broken arm and hope that it heals right. So...
So Troy, are you suggesting that we just hold firm on the original? They do it all up front?
Yeah. Yeah, I just think that that design, I can just, I mean, how many...
how many accidents there are gonna be because someone's not paying attention? It just, I don't know. Maybe they put a stoplight in front of the school would help, but I don't think they'd be open to that.
No.
You could consider a three-way stop there. That's something that-
Trapped would be horrible. I don't know.
Well, if you, we can see, we can just wait and see at the end of the agenda if anyone wants to go into closed session, I guess. But I think we've probably got enough feedback. Now, this comes back to the board, because the board has to approve the developer agreement. So we just didn't want to bring you in agreement and go through all that process, especially given their timeline, and have a majority of the board be very dissatisfied with us coming with that proposal.
Do you feel like you've gotten the direction you need? Because if I were you, I'd be really confused right now.
I feel. So, so because of open meetings law, I can't, we can't, I can't have side conversations and then talk about what I heard from everyone else. But I can have some individual conversations with members. And I will probably have to do that to get more direction.
I somewhat think that even if this was taken to the school board, that it wouldn't go anywhere anyway, so.
You're talking about the third option?
Yeah, what MSA is proposing.
Why do you feel that?
Because they, they haven't seemed real open to anything.
It's another reason why I'm feeling the way I do.
Which is?
That I'm kind of with Troy on this. I mean, it's, they haven't come forward and make it seem like it's like, oh, we messed up, can you help us? It's more like, you know, it's like, almost like it's expected of us, which kind of bothers me.
From what I, from what I've heard, I think that is how the viewpoint of some of the school board members is that it's not their job to pay for the roads. It's the village's job, why should they have to? And that's just what I've heard through my-
It's too bad, because they're the ones building the school.
Right. I don't necessarily support it, I'm just, that's the, that's the way it's being projected out there.
Well, at least this, this alternative with some details from engineering and everything, at least provides us a way to get them to be able to move forward with the commitment that they're gonna put in the rest of the improvements at a later date, albeit, you know, delayed. None of it's ideal, but they don't have enough money right now, as we stand, to do this. So can we make it work? And that's the question. And this, this at least provides a way forward to make that happen and still have their commitments met at a later date.
I will say that the way we discussed this, the, you look at the proposal for what will be there when, whenever the boulevard is improved. We looked at the crossing points, the traffic patterns, and the direction people will move to and from the site. And for non-vehicle travel, so not in a bus, not in a car, this plan has all of the components of what there will be at the, in fact, and there's a few details here that we hadn't even gotten into, that kind of level that we've added. But there is no, there's nothing on this plan that won't be, that isn't, that is a step back for safety for a kid who's on foot or on bike. Because of the bike, requiring the full bike path, the access to the other sites and the crossing. So if you imagine this, once the road is completely built out, there will be no, as I understand it, there's no other crossing. You know, you talked, talk about the southern driveway. There's no control over that intersection in the final plan. It's just a pass-through. And so all of the places where people won't be in a vehicle, this is 100% of what is required in the final buildup. That's one place where we didn't, didn't step back, step it back at all.
So from your perspective, safety-wise, it needs, it's at our, I mean, it's equivalent to the original proposal or the original design for safety?
Or placing for the light head, non-car moving vehicle type traffic, yes. That's what we, I don't think we originally did much as far as like MSA had any kind of design on here. I think our plan would have been, you know, originally was gonna be to review that, I assume. We hadn't looked at the intersection, like Larry said, in any detail until this all came about. So the typical section that was planned south of here and everything, yes, it shows just like what Larry says, there's always gonna be a path along there anyway, to get people there and the connections to the other schools and everything else. And those are still included.
There's a possibility that you might have some more vehicle, hopefully low-speed, with some more vehicle accidents. That's hard to predict.
And that's what the turtlenecks are meant for. And that was to obviously get them out of people swerving around them and everything else. So that was part of the recommendations and everything as well, so.
Well, I think we should move on with the meeting, I guess. I mean, if people are open to going into closed session later for other negotiating, I would be open to that.
All right. Larry, do we have to table this, or we're gonna bring it up later?
There's no need for any action.
Okay.
Just move on.
All right. Item 7B is discussing Consider Liquor License Application for licensing year 2019, July 2019 through June 2020 for School Grounds Coffee House. No issues, right?
I move to approve the liquor license application for year 2019, July 2019 to July 2020 for School Grounds Coffee House.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion?
What's the difference between a Class A and Class B?
Class A is, about it, is more of a grocery store, liquor store. Class B, depending on where the locations are, it's more of in-person or off-sales. So more of a restaurant, counter, and coffee place.
All right. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Having heard none, all is in favor. Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item 7-
Thanks for coming.
Didn't even have to speak.
See you, guys. Discussing Consider Operator License Application year of July 2019 through 2020 for Leyland Domain and Kelly Kennedy. Chief, any issues here?
No.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Okay, motion carries. Item 7D, then, update regarding village preparedness for COVID-19. The other man?
I'll do a quick, quick intro, Matt's walking up. We met last week, convened a meeting that included PD, emergency government director that's walking up right now. John joined on by a conference call, and we had Deer Grove EMS, Fire Department, Public Works, Parks, everyone, everyone convening to discuss whatever they have heard, whatever they have heard, as well as various meetings and updates from the county and webinars and all sorts of information that everyone's getting at a rapid pace. And a lot of the information we shared with you is maybe still relevant, but a lot of it has changed as well. So that's part of what Matt's gonna update on. And then Lisa may have a little bit of information on regarding elections.
Well, unless you've been living under a rock, the last couple of weeks, we all know what's been going on with COVID-19. So as Matt said, we convened as a, as a village last week, got all the entities together just to make sure the village is prepared for anything in the future coming forward. As you can see in the memo, you know, this isn't new information that we all haven't been hearing via the radio or TV or wherever you get your news. But, you know, this is a serious situation. We're ahead of it right now, but it's gonna get worse before it gets better. So as a village and as departments, we are prepared for what we need right now. Our policies and procedures are in place for Public Works, the EMS and Fire, and the Police Department to have our staff equipped with the professional, or excuse me, the protective equipment that they're gonna need going to possible situations where they're gonna be dealing with individuals with respiratory distress. So when it comes to the amount of equipment we have with all three entities, we're well-covered into the future to make sure that our officers, fire staff, EMS are all protected. But as we all know, this is gonna get worse probably before it gets better. So we'll definitely keep an eye on it. But the other day, I'm in contact with Dane County Emergency Management. We're getting every, or bi-daily, updates of the situation in Dane County, how everything's going within the county when it comes to supply, when it comes to the amount of cases, that are people that have been affected, and then any other guidelines that they're giving municipalities to take forward. As you can see later on in the agenda, there were some things that came up through those meetings when it came to resolutions and when it came to declaring an emergency inside of the village. Yeah, I mean, there's, this is a living, breathing, fluid animal. So we're gonna be keeping an eye on this, and we'll be doing what we can to prepare the village. And any news or any information that we get, we'll definitely be convening the greater minds together to try to combat this and to get the information out to our citizens as fast as we can. So, you know, just like as the rest of the news media's been saying, if you don't have to go out and be in, you know, groups now greater than 10, they're asking that you not. And if you do have to, to again, keep that six-foot or greater distance as we are all practicing here for good measures. So any questions regarding our preparedness as the village?
I just want to point out, this is why we needed an emergency government. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, and on that, I've, we've got an emergency plan in draft form already that's been pushed out to the higher beings so they can review it and scrutinize it and give it back to me. So we can hopefully here in the next few months present that to the board and get us fully prepared as an emergency government, so.
Nice.
Did the governor's declaration of emergency today overrule the, what we would have put together this evening on our own village declaration?
So what we'll do as a village tonight, if we choose to do it as well, basically it'll open up the funding, federal funding and state funding. What the governor did on Friday was, he made the declaration for the state, which then opens the state up to gather federal money from FEMA. So what we're gonna do is basically, the first thing that we have to do when we have an emergency issue, we have to declare an emergency so we can then open ourselves up to be able to get reimbursed for items that we purchased, or time that we spend, or overtime, or whatever else. So that's kind of where we're at, that point. When we had a meeting on Friday, it was, it was determined that we were gonna hopefully do this as a county-wide declaration, where all the municipalities were gonna come together and just make one big broad declaration. But it sounds like that the, the city of Madison jumped the gun and decided to do theirs Sunday night. So then they just told us today in the emergency management meeting that if you want, and you have a meeting coming up, to just have your municipalities make that declaration now, so.
And then the other resolution, which we'll talk about next, maybe we could, maybe John, if you want to intro it. Are there other questions for Matt at the moment? Maybe transition into that next item?
Cue up Lisa at all, too?
Oh, sorry. Yes, elections, Lisa?
So as of today, I had a webinar at 10:00 AM. It is not in the hands of the Wisconsin Election Commission on whether to postpone an election. That has been the question of the day. So it is, the dates will fall as they are in state statute. And we are ruling with, we will have an election. We are promoting absentee voting, of course. My inbox is blowing up as we speak. I processed over 111 absentee ballots, and I'm only up to noon as of today in my inbox. So that's what we will be promoting. And we did put a post out from the Dane County Clerk's Office on how to get that absentee ballot. Fielded several questions today, how many people get onto my vote and get their ballots. So I did cancel, I was having election training tomorrow with the poll workers. That has been canceled. I will communicate with them via email. I do have poll workers that are not going to be working, but as Matt said, this is very fluid. So who knows what Election Day will look like even on April 7? If we have, you know, a ton of absentees, we may not need as many people at the polls working. So we'll keep you informed of what's happening there. But as of now, the message is going to be, request your absentee ballot. The more, major thing to take away is that registration, online registration, closes March 18th. So if you are not registered, it's vital that you do that prior to, but you can request an absentee ballot up to the Friday before the election. So there is ample time to request that ballot. Although you want to make sure you have enough time for mailing back and forth. And we have Dropbox, so there's ways of reaching us. And we will take the phone calls and help as many as we possibly can.
Can people still come in and vote here?
That's a good question. It's kind of all, all over the board right now. Obviously, we're promoting for the safety of everybody, that they do it online. We do have our Type E notice that's been out, that we do have in-person absentee voting. But there again, everybody that's called today, I've asked them to please do it online. Or if they don't have internet access, we can mail, they can, you know, request it over the phone, and they can mail them the ballot, you know. They just have to have photo ID on file, and that's one of the major hiccups right now.
So, so if it's not in the hands of the Wisconsin election or that committee, whose hands is it in?
It's the legislation or the governor at this point.
And that was part of that meeting today, too. They said that it would actually cost more to delay the election and have people just sort of, you know, it's too remote, I guess, to try and do this. Because we're so close to it. And then just a plug, too, for this, if you guys have any, any citizen who can give you information there,
or avenues on Facebook to get your information, from the Village Cottage Grove's website, to the Police Department's Facebook page, and then also to Village Parks and Parks Department. So we're gonna update those on a regular basis to get as much, you know, on-time information out as quick as we can.
Yeah, and from the amount of requests that are coming in, it's wonderful, actually, to see that, that people are taken seriously. And yeah, it's a lot of extra work and a lot of extra cost, but for the health and safety of everyone, it's working.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and then we'll move on to item E is discussing Consider Resolution 2020-01, Resolution authorizing the village president and villagers administrator to have joint executive authority to implement necessary measures in response to COVID-19. I think this also goes along with the declaration of emergency that was sent out today as well to the board.
Yeah, so the first, the resolution, just looking at the scope of this crisis, it's unlike, I mean, we're not gonna be meeting as the board. I mean, first of all, that may be handled remotely going forward, you know, for one. And for two, just with how rapidly things change from viewpoint, discussing with other Dane County administrators and discussions that John and I have had, to keep things running as smoothly as possible, we'd be looking for- as smoothly as possible, we'd be looking for a temporary, temporary authority to make decisions without convening the board. So and some examples of this, this wouldn't be us approving things like site plans or development related. I mean, we're talking about authority to pay the bills, to relax policies on sick leave, on working from home, potential closure of municipal offices. That doesn't mean staff would not be coming here, but other communities have already restricted public coming into the public buildings. Really, everything's kind of on the table and we would, we wouldn't be making these decisions before, you know, seeing guidance from federal and state and county governments and seeing what other larger cities and villages are doing. But things like, other examples, cancellation of committee meetings indefinitely, likely cancellation of all recreation activities indefinitely, and then working with staff on communicating all of these, all of these matters and changes. So any, any questions or concerns? It also lays out, you know, who contingencies for if John or I are unable to handle these duties.
What about, do we need anything that allows us to have meetings electronically?
Sure.
So there's no change to the law that's necessary to have meetings via Skype or a video conference or teleconference or just audio conference? The, the guidance from the Department of Justice today was a little bit vague. They did put out guidance today, but it was a little vague. Basically, what they said is, don't just have phone conference meetings. Make sure that people who might need special accommodations or, or, that we're listening to those needs and trying to find ways to, to address those. And also depending on what might be on the agenda, there might be a need for there to be some visual component that we can make available, but it's, we need to watch the agenda and then pay attention to the special needs of people who might need, people who are hearing impaired, for instance, to, to make sure that everybody has access. Very not, very much not a black and white set of guidance, but I think it just tells us we need to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Motion to approve resolution 2020-01.
All right, second. All right, now is there any further discussion, Sarah?
Oh, I just was going to comment quick that I know for EMS, Chief Lang put out a virtual meeting option today.
Yeah, we're going to, I was going to talk about it later. It's down to a one-item agenda now and people are allowed to call in that are on the committee. You don't have to show up and that kind of thing, yeah.
At what point is an emergency over? Like I remember, like, because I see that it goes until the state's public health emergency declaration is lifted, like, does anybody know when an emergency is lifted, like how it works?
Well, you just won't get the press release, like you do in a declaration of emergency, but there is a final, like a cutoff date where, you know, maybe saying that, you know, this issue is no longer considered under emergency. Again, we'll get a press conference with the governor saying, we're good. But yeah, there is a.
That seems more exciting though than an emergency, like, yay, we're done.
Doesn't make the media connections, unfortunately.
Okay.
Motion second regarding the resolution 2020-01. Is there any further discussion? If not, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries and resolution will be signed later. I don't know where we put the declaration of emergency. Does that go hand-in-hand with this, the amount, or?
We do them each separately. Yeah, and I think this was, I thank you to Lieutenant Wagner for putting this together late in the day and I think Larry may have amendment that he'd like to ask for a change.
Yeah, I just would eliminate the last paragraph because the village board here is actually making the decision to make this declaration. So simple change, just eliminate the last paragraph.
The "be it finally proclaimed" paragraph? That one?
We don't need to change further to "finally" in the previous paragraph because we don't need those phrases at all anyway, so, even though we all put them in our resolutions.
They sound good, right?
They do sound good.
Makes it look official. So a motion to approve the declaration of emergency?
With that, with that change, I think.
With that last paragraph taken out.
Second.
Motion second then to declare an emergency for the Village of Cottage Grove with the last paragraph removed from this particular copy. Any further discussion?
I would add one thing, that on this particular resolution, this is only a 60-day declaration. So should this situation last longer than that, you'll be approached with the question a second time.
Let's hope it's only 60 days. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right. Then we'll move on to reports from village boards, commissions and committees, starting with Public Works Committee. JJ, you haven't talked at all today. You sit in the corner, very quiet. Do you want me to start? You want to?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I have the agenda in front of me and I remember what we talked about. So one of the things that was on the agenda was the lighting improvements, which we can all see in the village hall now. They have been switched over to LED, which is wonderful. I think the payback for this is six, seven years, something like that?
Over, yeah, over the two.
Yeah. So we did talk about that. We also talked about modification for emergency snow removal regulations where we're going to, that's ordinance 305-7, where we're going to give that authority over to the Director of Public Works rather than itself. That will make its way through the various channels it needs to in order to make that occur. We also talked, and hopefully we don't have any more snow, by the way, as a sidelight to that.
That's not what I hear. But I wish you were right.
And we also talked about the Village Road Salt Pilot Program, which I think will get underway with the fall snow season. We do have it sketched out and a good idea of where we potentially will do that. Again, this is all in line with trying to reduce the amount of salt that goes into our waterways and eventually into creeks and rivers and such. It's been done by some other communities and we think we can manage it as well. And we've got some good spots to kind of do the pilot, so the committee talked a little bit about that. New business, we talked about the current bids for West Parkview project, and again, that's to repay that, pulverize and repay. It's in need of some TLC, and so we talked a little bit about that. JJ went through the annual stormwater report, did mention that it's going to get a lot thicker and a lot bigger in the coming year because of the requirements are changing and just it's getting amped up a bit. The nice thing is we're starting to get more and more stuff on our electronic GAS system, so it's going to be a little easier from that perspective, but it'll be more work in the end because it's going to be definitely more thorough. And then we had the initial discussions about the Clark Street reconstruction plan for 2021. That also ties into, I think, the ad hoc bike committee is meeting or has met just after this. So it ties into that work and some other things around getting additional parking to Bakken Park. We're adding stalls with the reconstruction of Clark Street and we think we can accomplish some additional parking for Bakken as it becomes more and more popular with the new items there. Engineer and director's report, I don't know if there was anything there that was clearing or needed to be said. We set the next date for April 7th. We'll see if we commit to that or that, but that's when we have our tentative next meeting for Public Works. Anything else I missed?
We did have a couple of discussing, consider it under that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, so the first one is discussing, consider the award for West Parkview Street project. We do have a lowest bid, right?
Yep. It's Tri-County paving, there's a memo in there from me and one from Kevin recommending them.
Flip a coin. I was going to say, I make a motion to approve the, the Tri-County proposal for Parkview Street project.
Second. My question is, so we had 121,000 in the budget and then we got, we were awarded local road improvement funds of 27. So do we then, let's see, and it only came to one, almost 117. So we have about 31,000 left then?
Yep.
Okay, is my math right?
Sounds right. We also have other roads that could use some work.
Right.
We've discussed possibly doing some sidewalk ramp work with some of this money, but any of that would be brought back to Public Works in here. But there's definitely need out there, so.
Right. Is there been any talk of projects like these being delayed then because of everybody on?
I haven't heard of any yet, but this is all kind of terrifying. So as of right now, I haven't heard of anything that's being delayed construction-wise. So I as well keep you posted if I hear of anything, but.
Well, let's get it in there.
All right, we have a motion of second to place the award for the West Parkview Street project. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. We have on your review, MS4 report.
The report's in your packet. It's essentially a lot like last year, talks about the number of erosion control inspections we did, number of outreach activities we did. There's really nothing significant of note. We didn't do any major stormwater projects this year, aside from the stormwater quality modeling update completed by MSA, which at some point in the future, I don't know now, we're thinking April, but it may be a little later. Eric Thompson's going to come back and summarize, but if anybody's interested, I can send you the 163 pages. You can come by and get a hard copy. It's definitely comprehensive and ultimately good news on both sides, both of our watersheds and our stormwater report. That's the biggest thing we're submitting this year, the DNR, as a part of this report. But it's a requirement that it presented to the governing bodies, so if there's any questions on anything stormwater related.
So you said there weren't any changes from last year?
I mean, you know, we did different outreach things and, you know, different numbers, things we did. We, I believe we pulled a little more street sweepings off the streets, but we'll do much more this year now with a street sweeper that starts every time, so.
And then who completed the form? You?
Just, yeah.
Lucky you. All right. Thank you.
And then C is to discuss and consider ordinance 03-2020 regarding the language modification to ordinance 305-7 emergency snow removal regulation, which I mentioned earlier, changing the person responsible to declare the emergency to the Director of Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second. To approve, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Thanks, JJ. Moving on then, item to the Library Planning Committee.
We met at the Madison Community Foundation at 4:30 on March 4th for a presentation by Tom Linfield that basically provided information about resources that a library can provide and how people engage in library services. In 2008, the stats were that for every dollar spent on a library, you had a $4.06 return in economic growth. And then we went over to the Madison Central Library and had a tour. And that was basically it. It was two and a half hours, so, but it was a lot of good information about what's going on there and events and how their library has evolved with what their patrons need and want, so.
Good.
And we're supposed to meet next week, but that probably won't happen now, so.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Then Community Development Authority.
We met on Monday, March 9th at 5:30. Gray Wolf came and did a presentation on TID-10 master plan, just to kind of outline where some potential road stuff could go and what phases they'd like to see. Nothing real detailed, just a general, if I seem correct, Aaron of the master plan.
We needed to do our conceptual plan for us to start doing the urban service area and then that's kind of what they're going to do.
And obviously, as they come forward with stuff that goes through the CDA anyways and the bank commission. And then we continued our work on the marketing project that we're looking at, trying to come up with ideas of costs, where, what we would expect from, what we'd want to see at least happen in that marketing project and branding project with, for us, so that when we come to the board, we'd have a clear understanding of what we would be asking for. We looked at three RFPs that, from three different communities that had gone through a marketing process, project similar to ours, Quecana, Wisconsin, Shorewood, Wisconsin and Wausau. And it was pretty much unanimous committee-wise that the Quecana one made more sense than the other one, than the other two. And matter of fact, a lot of the language that was in there and a lot of the goals and stuff they covered are things that we really had already started talking about and that we enjoyed their insight, too. So we basically gave Aaron and Matt direction to just kind of keep plugging away and looking into what they're doing and writing up what it would look like for us, and that's kind of where we left it. Meeting, obviously, the second, hopefully, second Monday in April, so.
Thanks, Joe. Then move on to the ad hoc sustainability committee. Heidi and I met with the group there on March 10th. Really, this is the initial gathering, selected the chairperson, Nick, Heidi's secretary, went through just background information about sustainability, what's kind of out there, at least a little bit of, you know, there's a lot of information out there, background from the state, county and other, some of the other communities are doing around sustainable efforts, what kind of, at least initially kicked around some ideas in our community we'd like in our community to ultimately to bring back to this board. Talked a lot about education particularly because that we think is key. Unfortunately, sustainability has negative connotations for certain citizens for whatever reason, so we thought that would be a good area, area for us to focus in on, as well as kind of tracking the good things that are already happening in the community around sustainability. And then ultimately, next time, we're going to try to sketch out and draft a vision and goals around this. That's kind of the homework of the committee. We will perhaps meet ten of date of April 14th, but again, with everything else, that might be delayed a bit. We also talked about doing something around Earth Day, but maybe like trash talking. Trash talking is where folks go out and pick up trash and you record that and put it on on Facebook. There's a really robust group in Madison that does this. We thought that would be kind of cool to get that going, just letting everybody know kind of the vision and everything, but we may be pushing that back a little bit, unfortunately.
Maybe you could encourage people to put, while they're out walking, socially distancing themselves to pick up trash. themselves to pick up trash.
Yes. So we may have to try to sketch something like that, at least get people thinking about it, just as an initial kind of go-through. So that was that. Then we have the ADHOC Architecture Review Committee.
It's on there twice.
Yes, it is on there twice. Twice is nice, right?
Yeah.
So we're taking the first one there. So, Melissa, I don't know if you want to run through that or if you want me to.
Well, it was a really long meeting, and basically we just looked at the, what's on Plan Commission 2 about the Johnson Health Tech approval of a site plan to add 40 parking spaces. That kind of goes into their current landscaping. They said this morning that would take out 12 trees, but he's a forester, or used to be a forester, so he would try to save them and plant them somewhere else.
And it's part of their conditions that Erin outlined too as well, to, if they can't save them, they gotta replace them.
Yeah.
And then curb cuts, I think there was one other, one other condition you had in here. Can't remember. Storm sewer, stormwater management, just make sure that, that's all got to go back to MSA or Erin or both.
Oh, and they did indicate that they do ride share and that their workers get credit and credit or something, and that probably in the warmer weather, there's more bikers than, so.
All right. And that meeting met in record time. Then we'll move on to Plan Commission. Met, we already covered some of that stuff, but we met on March 11th last week. Covered the Miracle League, the request for their ADA accessible baseball field. That was approved for their initial site plan, and they walked through that. And then we discussed, considered, again, Johnson Health Tech for their plan for additional parking stalls, which Melissa just outlined, that was in front of the ARC meeting this morning. That was also approved by the Plan Commission. Discussed, considered a final plat for Kennedy Hills subdivision, which is in the town of Cottage Grove, and that was approved, and that's part of our extrapery jurisdiction responsibilities. And discussed the comprehensive, potentially comprehensive plan adjustment to, for Tim Olson's to amend some property up by his develop, potential development that's across from Bakken Park off of Vilas there. That was just a discuss. There was no action to be taken in that one. We did get an update from Manona School District project, which we, there was no action there. We talked at length, and we will be talking about that more yet tonight. And talked about the potential amendments for zoning ordinance for conditional use. Again, that's more information on no action at this point, but more to come on that. And next meeting was scheduled for April 8th. The agenda items could be potentially some of the hotel discussions.
We changed it to April 15th, tentatively.
Oh, that's right. I circled that, sorry.
If Erin is still going.
That's right. Yeah, Erin's.
Or if it's just late.
And maybe a call-in or something. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. And then on here, we did have some discussing, considers are related to that then. The first one, as I mentioned, was the Discussing Consider Request for Miracle League of Dane County, approval of a site plan for a baseball field in Bakken Park.
Make a motion that we approve Miracle League Dane County for approval for site plan ADA accessible baseball field in Bakken Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
With the conditions as laid out by staff?
Yes, with conditions of staff, thank you.
With conditions, okay. All right. It's motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Second item here from the Plan Commission was the Discussing Consider Request from Johnson Health Tech for approval of the site plan amendment to provide additional parking spaces to the existing parking lots located at 1600 Landmark and Commerce, in the Commerce Park.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions of staff.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Third item then here is Discussing Consider the Final Plat for Kennedy Hills Subdivision located in the town of Cottage Grove within the village of Cottage Grove territorial jurisdiction.
Can someone just orient me to where this is? So I know Cottage Grove Road is going along the west side, right? Where is that?
It's about three quarters of a mile east.
Yes.
So do we have any road connection concern?
Not in this first phase.
Oh, boy. Future phases, maybe?
Well, eventually if the village grows out that, that way, then we would have concerns. But there's stub and amend, so.
They are stub and amend?
Yes.
This Fields Road?
Yeah, at least, I think it's not phase one, it's gonna be probably phase two or three, this initial phase, I don't believe. Erin, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, is the town connected to itself?
Yeah.
Shouldn't be an issue. While we grow out there, we'll be on the other side of Kennedy Grove, so we're gonna start forming a cross. Production.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff conditions.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second for approval. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. All right, for the ADHOC Committee, we already covered that. Reports from village officers, there anything?
Yeah, we have a memo that was sent, related to questions about potential vaping ban on village property. And we just basically concluded that there's, it's within the village's power to do that if they choose to, and don't see anything that would stand in the way of that.
And Trustee Murphy sent a comment saying that she will work on some language for the Board of In- or in Police Council to consider, so she'll work on this a little bit.
All right. Any questions for Larry on this, on the memo? I'm certainly glad that Heidi is pushing this and the board's willing to consider it because it's a serious problem, particularly for our younger people. Police Chief, you have an annual report, Department Objectives, and...
So the first one is the annual report for 2019. We do one every year, and our, this just, I won't go through every statistic in here, although the first one would be calls for service, and I'm on page eight. Hopefully it corresponds to what you have. We had 12,541 calls for service in 2019. The year before, we had almost 14,000, and calls for service, as a reminder, is self-initiated or actually someone calling dispatch and asking that would come out. And it could be anything from a property check to a traffic stop or, you know, a fight or something like that. So it works out to about 1,000 calls for service a month, or approximately 35 calls a day. Crime in Cottage Grove, as you can see with the attached uniform crime reporting statistics, remains low. If you go on Safe Wise, it's a, it's a website that talks about safety issues, people's perceived safe, how they feel safe in their home or in their city, and it also takes UCR statistics and compiles them for the United States and for Wisconsin, and we are the 16th in the tops, we are the 16th safest city in the, in Wisconsin, and it's usually villages and cities of over 4,000. They don't count a 1,500-person village or anything like that when they're making these. And I think this is about the last three out of four years, we've been in the top 20. We're usually in there. Cross Plains is safer than us by a little bit, but they're also a little smaller, not as close to Madison. And then when you go down to the uniform crime reporting, again, things like murder, rape, things like that really just don't happen in the village, knock on wood. We, robberies, we had zero. Burglaries, it looks like we had zero, although I'd have to double-check on that, but that's what was reported. So when you get down to page, I'm at the bottom of page 12, it talks about crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. We're pretty level from last year as far as total crimes. And page 13 shows a graph for 2014 through 2019. The split happened in 2015 when we became a village-only police department, so as you can see, total offenses has gone down pretty much every year, except for the last two years, we're pretty flat. And then the next graph is violent crime comparison. Cottage Grove is .09 per 1,000 residents. Wisconsin averages 3, and the United States is 3.7. Property crime comparison, we're at 3. Wisconsin's 15.6 per 1,000 residents. United States is 22. And then one thing that really stands out for us is our solve rate for violent crimes, property crimes. If there's a violent crime, we pretty much every time solve it. And I think a lot of that has to do, we know who did it. So, not always, but we always, we usually have a pretty darn good rate idea of who did it, which obviously helps for solving the violent crimes. And then solve rate for property crimes, we went down from last year, but we're still double the state average for solving property crimes, which is pretty darn good. And then I go into things like our achievements and accreditation and investigations and highlighted some of the cases the detective and the department have worked on. If anybody has any questions, I can answer those, otherwise I'll just keep scrolling down. And then we talk about some of the programs we're involved in at the police department. We try to make sure we're always evolving and staying involved with the community and making sure that we're reaching out and making connections with as many groups as possible. When you get to the top of page 18, it talks about the top 10 calls for service. So as you'll see, check property is the number one call for service, traffic stop is number two, traffic arrest, which is writing a ticket, is our number three, and then parking is number four. So you can see those top 10 calls for service, what we're doing. And then ticket summary, when people talk about citations and police departments, they think whenever you get pulled over, you get a ticket, but that's not always the case. As you can see, we wrote 2,400 written warnings last year. We only wrote 1,500 traffic citations. So there's not necessarily looking to write a ticket every time if we feel that the person is better served and the department and the safety of the public's better served by writing a warning, we will do that. And then it talks about traffic offenses, what we see the most, and obviously no proof of insurance is number one. Exceeding speeds 11 to 15 is our next most popular one. We rarely write tickets for 0 to 9 over because there's no room to drop it once you go below theirs. That's one of the reasons you don't see many of those. Traffic data, it's just giving, shows how many tickets we wrote and how many traffic stops we made comparing 2019 through 2015. Traffic data, we had 31 OWIs last year, 30 the year before, 28 the year before, so we stay pretty steady with those. Accidents has gone down dramatically over the past five years, which is nice to see. And I think a lot of that has to do with being visible out there in the community and making stops and our speed signs, although we did suffer a failure this weekend when our speed trailer got ran over by somebody. Yes, and took off afterwards. There is no respect for the law, apparently, so our fender was damaged and they broke the tire on it, so.
You got a camera on there, right? So you caught them.
We have a picture of the car. It's white, and did anybody's friends or family come home with damage to the right front of their car?
Jeff, weren't you, didn't you have a white car?
I thought her had a white.
Uh-oh.
I didn't see the damage.
It has kept going.
Jeez.
Okay, so school resource officer, she received a nice award at a state, from the state legislature this year for first responder of our Assembly District, which was nice. Talks about some of our programs, coffee with a cop, and then our Facebook and Nextdoor and Ring apps that we're involved in, and then interaction with the public. Let's throw a few pictures in there, show what we're doing. And that's about it, unless anybody else has any questions about the annual report. And then our Use of Force report, well, goals and objectives for 2020, I put those in there. We're required to do that every year. So we'll maintain accreditation, enhance bicycle patrol program, enhance and implement a physical fitness wellness program, which we're well on our way to doing, maintain solve rates for violent property crimes if we can, and then develop a domestic violence officer program. So no matter if we receive that cop's grant or not for an additional position, we will be making that a big focus in 2020. And then our results of our goals and objectives for 2019. We met those goals and objectives by maintaining accreditation, implementing a bicycle patrol program, defining and developing and implementing a physical fitness program. We maintained our solve rate for violent crimes, however, we did not maintain our solve rates, solve rates for property crimes that were double the state average, but we didn't do as well as the year before. Questions on that? And then Use of Force is the last report. In 2019, we had four documented use of force incidents, and that's less than half of what we had in 2018. And I talk about those incidents in there, and I don't know if you want me to go through each one, but basically each one was looked at and it was examined by us and determined that the officer used the appropriate level of force necessary. We didn't injure anybody and nobody requested treatment for their injuries, and I had zero complaints from anybody afterwards, so. I didn't see any patterns or any problems where we needed to change policies or discipline anybody, so I think we did pretty good for 2019. We also participated in a use of force study by the University of Washington. They came here and 16 Dane County agencies put in their reports and use of force reports for 2014 through 2019, I believe, no, 2018, and they analyzed all that data, and Dane County law enforcement, us included, came out very... out very well as far as use of force, appropriate levels being used. In general, I was very proud of Dane County and especially our agency as, as to how we use force and, and I really didn't see any in Dane County that were considered way off the charts. And they use a scale to grade use of force and there wasn't one in the whole county during those four years that was considered excessive.
It looked like the ages that are in the report were fairly young. Is that typical, that when use of force is used, that they're younger side as opposed to like older adults?
It is for us because of the middle school. And when they go hands-on up there with a student and then it comes to us, even if we're just escorting someone down the hallway and grabbing their wrist, wrist and or directing them, we consider that a use of force. So that's, that's why you might see a few of those in there. And then the year before, we had that group home that we responded to fairly regularly and we had a young lady over there that required use of force multiple times, so it throws it off. But generally, use of force is, I'll share that use of force report with the law enforcement committee this month, but generally it's the age group of twenty to thirty-four is most police use of force is used. And it's zero point one of all incidents were called to result in an arrest and two point five percent of those arrests actually involve the use of force. And of that two point five percent, it could be as simple as grabbing someone and putting them down in the ground. So it, use of force by police in this country is way, way down.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Thanks, Chief.
You bet.
All right, then we will move on to communication miscellaneous business, consider approval of vouchers. Any questions with the bills?
I'll move to approve.
You got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Correspondence, I think.
Heidi emailed us and I forgot to read a couple of her comments into the record, at least she emailed, you can include that in there, but she did have a question for JJ regarding, and this is on the COVID topic. Heidi was asking about any potential waivers for late fees on, on billings? And JJ was looking in some guidance from the PSC, that's our, the regulating agency and.
I've not heard that yet, but maybe it's a shakeover to its head. I'm sure they probably gave a lot of questions, so nothing yet today.
Sure. And then she said, "In my opinion, none of our village employees from salary on down to crossing guards should have to worry about loss of income in the state, in the state of emergency. We should be proposing to continue all pay for all employees during this time. I'm committed to taking care of the people that take care of us." And then she added, "Thank you to all the staff members working tirelessly to get us through this worldwide crisis. Thank you to Matt and all department heads that are working to ensure that our essential services are provided to residents. I also want to thank each and every person in the medical, safety and first responder We will all depend on you during this time. Thanks to those in education trying to keep us slight sense of normalcy in our kids' lives and those in the food supply chain that will help keep us going as well. Our wonderful Cottage Grove community will be here for all our local businesses on the other, other side of this. I've been watching local social media pages on how to help them in the meantime. For now, I encourage everyone to please follow the guidance of our experts and officials and look for the helpers."
All set.
Are there many village staff that are being, besides the crossing guards of school being out, being impacted by ours?
There shouldn't be, that's part of what John and I will be checking on. Most communities are likely going to just relax, sick leave and other leave, you know, if people have the available leave and if they want to use it, they can use it. That's the other purpose for potentially closing offices to the public is that we can certainly accommodate the space requirements that are needed, so that's a potential way to, for people to still be able to come to work under the current guidelines, but you know, that could always change as well. And then the federal government is working on, and it's not maybe comprehensive enough, but certainly some, some assistance with sick leave and family medical leave that would be paid as well. So we're looking into all of those things, but yeah.
Other than the other correspondence, like Matt referenced, Matt, who referenced coming through from the county and the state, I don't have anything else. And then upcoming committee events?
Nothing, everything canceled.
Nothing. I think the committee event is called social distancing, which is a word we wouldn't have used three months ago, two months ago, or two words I should say. Future agenda items, probably going to figure out how to potentially meet via phone slash video slash whatever we're already talking about, some different ways of doing that, certainly in the guidance of open meetings, allowing committee members to also join in, but we're definitely leaning strongly to that. And then obviously, potentially any committee that really doesn't need to meet, we're going to probably close for just in the current climate. And the state could come back and we may, may change everything tomorrow by whatever degree or guidance they provide or that's coming. That's what Matt said. Then we will, if there's nothing else, then we'll move right into closed session, considering a request for a change in requirement to public improvements for a Menona Grove School District Elementary School. And I'll make the, the motion then is the Village of Cottage Grove Board may consider to enter, do we want to enter, I think we decided that we wanted to enter this closed session, correct?
We do.
Okay. So then we will, the village board will enter into a closed session, request pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And again, this is in, in this particular case, it would be to convene with any closed session items in open session that, that come out of the closed session.
Do we have to do both closed sessions at once? Like do the number twelve also?
We should do them separately.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We'll then have a roll call on this.
Allen?
Aye.
Winberg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.